Of the City Council, the City of Waverly in the great state of Iowa. Today is Monday, September 8th at 7 o'clock. We were called to order. Would you join me in the police allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Counsel, our city clerk is back to work and she is prepared for you an agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
I move approval of the agenda best presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that passed unanimously. Also prepared for you tonight are minutes from our August 18 regular meeting and our August 25 study session meeting. Let's take them together if you don't mind. Can I have a motion to approve both?
I move we approve the August 18th, 2025 regular meeting and August 25th, 2025 study session meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. That passed unanimously. I would propose to you, City Council friends, a proclamation. Whereas Sea Tracks Think Train Week is to be held across the United States from September 15 to 21 in 2025. Whereas 2,252 rail grade crossings collisions resulted in 749 personal injuries and were responsible for 268 fatalities in the United States during 2024 and. Whereas 1,465 pedestrian trespassing casualties have occurred in the United States resulting in 821 pedestrians being killed and another 644 injured while trespassing on railroad property right of way during 2024 and. Whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad right of ways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens and. Whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the National Operation Lifesaver Incorporated, the United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety to enforce applicable laws in support of National Sea Tracks Think Train Week. Therefore, I, Mark A. Anderson, and the City of Waverly, Iowa do hereby attest our full support proclaiming September 15 to 21 of 2025 National Sea Tracks Think Train Week, and we encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education. May I have a motion to approve this proclamation?
Move to approve the proclamation as read by the mayor.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that passed unanimously. Counsel, I propose to you a second proclamation. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of concern in the United States and in the City of Waverly and. Whereas the City of Waverly is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our state and to provide additional resources that citizens of the City of Waverly need and. Whereas the City of Waverly is committed to working with the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, Waverly-Shelrock Area United Way, and Northeast Iowa Community Action, Waverly Sharing Gardens, and local churches in educating people about the role and the importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues and. Whereas more individuals in Bremer County rely on food provided by the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, Waverly-Shelrock Area United Way, Northeast Iowa Community Action, Waverly Sharing Gardens, and local churches annually and. Whereas the Northeast Iowa Food Bank served a total of 26,462 duplicated households in Bremer County and distributes 200,942 meals to people within Bremer County last fiscal year. Whereas within this current fiscal year, it is estimated by Feeding America's Map the Meal Gap that Bremer County estimated food insecure population is 2,440. This is the amount of people who don't know where their next meal will come from in Bremer Bremer County estimated food insecurity rate of 9.7% or 1 in 10 people, and Bremer County estimated child food insecurity rate is 13% or 1 in 8 children and. Whereas food banks across the country, including the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, Waverly-Shelrock Area United Way, and Northeast Iowa Community Action, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in their community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Mark A. Anderson, and the City Council of the City of Waverly do hereby recognize September 2025 as Hunger Action Month in the City of Waverly, and we call this observance to the attention of our citizens. May I have a motion to approve this proclamation?
I move we approve this proclamation as read by the mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that passed unanimously. Thank you. Now is the time for public comments on items not currently on the agenda. If you want to speak something not on the agenda, please rise and come to the microphone. I see no one, but I do see a consent calendar with lots of stuff on it. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. We're now on to I, regular business. We are at Resolution 25-117. This is a resolution approving balancing change order number one, accepting the Baskin's Creek Trail Bridge Replacement 2024 Project as complete and approving pay estimate number three as the final payment. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 25-117, a resolution approving balancing change order number one and accepts the Baskin's Trail Bridge Replacement Project as complete and approves the final pay request for $32,744.84 to Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Reinbeck, Iowa.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Oh, that was a roll call vote.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Hey, Carla, I changed my mind. Let's have a roll call vote.
Kay, Bergen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
That passed unanimously. If you're keeping score at home, we are one council person short. Mr. Drinko is out of town. Resolution 25-118. Now, this is a resolution approving the option to purchase real estate for the East Gate Sanitary Sewer Lift Station Replacement Project. Is there a motion?
I will move approval of Resolution 25-118, a resolution approving the option to purchase real estate for the East Gate Sanitary Sewer Lift Station Replacement Project from Russell and Norah Brunz, and shall pay the sellers the non-refundable $500 option purchase payment upon acceptance of this agreement.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So it's $500 the entire payment?
No.
No.
No, this is basically earnest money.
Okay, gotcha.
It's $10,000, I think.
Any other discussion? Alrighty. This will be a roll call vote.
Jones.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes. That passed unanimously. Number three is Resolution 25-119. This is a resolution approving change order number one, accepting the water pollution control facility and Crestwood Avenue Lift Station Roof Replacement Project as complete and approving final payment to All-Star Construction in the amount of $51,661.25. Can I motion?
I move approval of Resolution 25-119, a resolution approving change order number one, and accepts the water pollution control in Crestwood Avenue Lift Station Roof Replacement Project as complete and approves the final payment to All-Star Construction of Clarksville, Iowa in the amount of $51,661.25.
Second.
Any discussion?
Remind me where Crestwood Avenue? Oh, there's Crestwood Avenue. Oh, that one. Okay. Yeah, I know where that is now. Okay.
You appear ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to Resolution 25-120. A resolution approving the proposal from LRE Water for a desktop well sitting assessment for the estimated cost of $17,000. Can I have a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 25-120, a resolution approving the proposal from LRE Water for a desktop well sighting assessment for the estimated cost of $17,000, authorizes the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So this is not a well sitting on your desktop. This is deciding where to put a new well in.
No, I think it's a desktop on your screen. No.
Maybe Justin.
Yeah, let's say Justin.
Explain it, Justin. We're confused.
Um, so as you're all aware, well number seven had some PFAS detection, and we've been looking through that with the DNR. It's inevitable at some point in time we'll have to shut down that well. This is basically setting us up for a well on that pressure zone in town, and it is a site they do is they do fracture trace analysis and some other electronical imaging so they can find out where the cracks are, so where the water, the best place to drill is the water is. We did do one in 1999 when we did well number eight. They did a similar survey, so we have one site already identified from that one. I don't know if it's still valid or not, and this will basically give us a couple of ideas in town with locations that are possible sites for this well.
You can't use an old guy with the divining rod?
A little more scientific now.
Okay. So where's the desktop come in?
Uh, there's actually, right now, there's no fieldwork. That's where they're saying desktop. So a lot of it's using aerials, a lot of satellite imagery and different things like that.
So are they looking at sites near the current station or not?
Ideally, you would not because it's susceptible to groundwater infiltration. That's why we have the PFAS there. So we'd be looking in other areas of town, primarily, you know, the southern area of town where we're expanding right now and hopefully close to some infrastructure.
You.
What happens if we don't approve this? With number seven, how could, how long could that last?
Yeah, we have to comply by 2031 is the new requirement for the PFAS. If the results keep changing like they do, at some point in time, we'll probably be forced to shut that well off. We do have other wells that can service that zone, but it's not a long-term solution for redundancy, you know, because both sides should have two wells. We'd be down to three, so it's short one side.
What kind of a timeframe do we look at from like this initial investigation to when a new well could be functional?
That's a very good question. We're working through that right now. I'm pushing for this because there's some funding right now through the Iowa DNR. Basically, it's a 100% forgivable loan for a new well if you have PFAS detection. So for me, it's, I want to get started before there's other detections throughout the state. This will put us kind of ahead of things. If we can find some good locations, possibly the next step would be getting a consultant on board to work with designing and what we need to do to get this well installed.
So for a couple of reasons. One is we take advantage of the funding now to get the information, and secondly, then we're prepared if and when seven needs to be shut down and we don't get caught off guard. Is that correct?
Correct. Because this PFAS came to shock to everyone. I mean, we didn't have any warning that we had it in the well. We had a couple of samples that came in, and within a year, you know, we're on quarterly sampling. If you remember, this, a lot of this is paid for. We had a legal retainer sign for a lawsuit, and some of you may have, or may or may not have been on here, in August of '23. So this money, we've already received some payments on this, and we'll be getting substantial amount of money for this, so this will be paid for with that PFA lawsuit money.
Now, remind me, is well seven on the west side of the river?
East side.
East side. Okay.
It's right by Cedar Road Parkway in the fire training area.
Okay. So if we're going to put something else, we would want something else on the east side of the river?
It's all connected. It's interconnected on that zone, so anywhere on that zone would work.
Any more discussion?
But your, the background information, I mean, it sounds like this would be built next summer?
It could move that fast. If, it's all about the land acquisition, you know, if there's, what there is for infrastructure, what there is for design. Basically, the next step, this would set us up to have an idea for a test well. Basically, we could say, drill here, we put a test well in, you could see what the capture is on it, how much it produces, what the quality is. Those are kind of the next steps in line with this.
Yeah, that's a fast track estimate. Summer '26, we could get it done. Funding's going to be the other issue. I'm sure there's a timeframe that has to occur, depending on how you want to go about it. There's probably going to be matching funds, or we're off to front it. All that has to be figured out. So that is like best case scenario.
Okay.
It'd be knocking us out next summer, but I think it'll be probably a little later in that, depending on the situation.
You appear ready to vote? Carla, let's have another roll call vote.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which brings us to Resolution 25-121. A resolution approving a quote with Chosen Valley Testing Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa for the Waverly Aquatic Center Inspection and Testing Services. Can I have a motion on that?
Move to approve Resolution 25-121, a resolution approving the quote from Chosen Valley Testing Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa for Waverly Aquatic Center Inspections and Testing Services in the amount of $16,035 and authorizes the mayor to sign the quote.
Second.
Any discussion?
Their estimate was way lower than other companies. Is that a concern at all or not?
Uh, the second lowest was like $19,000.
Yeah.
So it wasn't.
Just the outlier was the high one.
Yeah. And honestly, the first one that we got back was more like $70,000 before everything got scaled back a little bit. So yes, there was just that one outlier there.
And what exactly is this testing for?
So it'll test the concrete as it's coming in to be poured for that consistency of that, and then also ground compaction and rock and so on, how well that's compacted.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
And is that a law that says you have to have an outside company test that? Sounds like it's required.
Right. I guess I don't know for sure if it's a law, but it's a good practice.
Yeah.
You don't want the company pouring the concrete to test their own concrete and make sure it's good to go. You don't want somebody else says it's good to go. So it's all about quality control and make sure we don't have issues over the future.
Like deep water, high rising?
Things like that, yes.
Councilperson Raffi is like in the old days, trust but verify.
Yes.
Any other discussion? You appear ready to vote. This will be a roll call vote.
Raffi.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to Resolution 25-122. A resolution approving the purchase of two Toro Z Master 4000 Series 48-inch zero turn mowers from MTI Distributing of Grimes, Iowa for Harlington Cemetery. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 25-122, a resolution approving the purchase of two Toro Z Master 4000 Series 48-inch zero turn mowers for Harlington Cemetery from MTI Distributing of Grimes, Iowa in the amount of $14,557.64.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Seems like there's always a conversation between are we going with something residential or something commercial? We're always seeing we kind of right on the border between like which one do we actually want?
I think this is a size issue. If you want to get between those stones, you can't go any bigger. It's about as big as you can get. Is that fair, Garrett?
That's fair, but yeah, these are a little more commercial grade, nicer deck, better quality engine, you know, and stuff like that. We expect to run them a little longer than what we have our residuals in the past.
Okay. Are you going to sell the old ones?
Yes. There's a $5,000 trade.
Oh, trade.
That's all.
I was trying to get you some free advertising for Facebook. Any more discussion? We're going to buy some lawn mowers? Roll call vote.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to Resolution 25-123. A resolution approving the purchase of a 2WD Workman HDX Utility Vehicle for the Parks Department from MTI Distributing of Grimes, Iowa. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 25-123, a resolution approving the purchase of a 2WD Workman HDX Utility Vehicle for the Parks Department from MTI Distributing of Grimes, Iowa in the amount of $26,158.35.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Leisure Services is really spending the money this week.
I'm glad they're transferring the old one to the cemetery.
Correct. Yes. The one that this parks, that this one will replace in the parks is actually in better shape than what the cemetery is, so that's where that's going.
Any more discussion? Let's have a roll call vote.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, bringing us to Resolution 25-124. A resolution approving the final payment to Harold Reich Surveying and accepting the Harlington Cemetery Expansion Project as complete. Can I have a motion?
I would move to approve Resolution 25-124, a resolution approving the final payment to Harold Reich Surveying of Waverly, Iowa in the amount of $7,202.27 and accepting the Harlington Cemetery Expansion Project as complete.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, well, it looks like we're ready for another vote.
Jones.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us now to Resolution 25-125. This is a resolution approving payment to Play Power LT Farmington, that is Play Pro Rec for the First Home Park Playground Equipment and Installation. Is there a motion out there?
I will move approval of Resolution 25-125, a resolution approving the payment of $9,508 to Play Power LT Farmington Play Pro Rec of Dallas, Texas for the First Home Park Playground Equipment and Installation.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Looks like we're still waiting for some insurance money to come in.
That's correct.
Or half of it.
$50,000 insurance of that. Yep. So as soon as this is approved, then I'll get that sent in for the final insurance payment.
And the plan was to put a sidewalk out there, right?
It's there.
It's there. Okay. I haven't been, but great.
And did they finally get that damaged piece replaced?
Yes. The spinner, or as we so lovingly know it, merry-go-round, that, the first one that we got wasn't in the best of shape, so that's already, they replaced that right away for us. We ended up with that about maybe a week and a half ago.
Yeah, it looks good. There's people out there on it.
There's people playing on it all the time, and you can see how much the wood fiber gets smashed down and under the swings, how it's all gone and needs to be replaced all the time. So it's definitely getting used.
Yeah, and Councilperson Myers, when he says merry-go-round, it's not the kind that we had when we were little, that threw the kids off and, no, it's much safer. Okay, any more discussion on the playground? If you haven't been out, you should go play. It's really fun. All right, it looks like we're ready for a roll call vote.
Cangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
That's unanimous, taking us to 25-126. Resolution approving proposal and standard fee schedule with Harold Reich Survey of Waverly, Iowa for the site surveying of the boat ramp and parking area at Three Rivers Park. Can I have a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 25-126, a resolution approving a proposal and standard fee schedule with Harold Reich Surveying of Waverly, Iowa for site surveying of the boat ramp and parking area at Three Rivers Park for the not-to-exceed amount of $8,000, authorizing the mayor to sign the proposal.
Second.
So, any discussion?
It's good to see this happening.
Yeah. That's a good project. Okay, we appear ready to vote. Let's do a roll call.
All right. Myers.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jones.
Motion, please.
I'll move approval of the following mayoral appointments. Meredith Kealan to be appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission to fill a vacancy for a term ending June 30th, 2028, and Angela Wessel to be appointed to the Library Board of Trustees to fill a vacancy for a term ending July 1st, 2030.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Thank you for our volunteers.
Yeah. These are really strong appointments. Really pleased. Let's see. No more discussion. This will be a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. You have in front of you four reports from various commissions. Any questions or discussion? I hear none. That will take us forward to staff updates. James?
Yes, sir. We have an update. Swimming pool.
All right. Got a couple of things for you guys tonight. An update on the pool, some pictures.
An update on the pool, some pictures. They're going here, so just a second for this to turn around.
Thought it'd be deeper.
What was that?
Thought it'd be deeper. It must be the zero entry part.
Probably entering something.
It's good to keep your sense of humor.
That's all I got left, right?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, fair, okay.
I'm surprised nobody set up the one they'd stand next to or something.
I hope not. I might have to tell them to move.
All right, so this first picture that you're looking at is, um...
Garrett, do you want to move over to the microphone for the...
There's one right here.
I didn't see it, sorry.
Nope, you're, you're good. Um, is the effect of de-watering the pool. So, uh...
Is that another word for empty?
De-watering.
No, no. This is groundwater that's coming out. They hit groundwater at about, uh, between 13, 15 feet. They need to go down to 24 feet, and we'll get into that here in a minute as to why they need to go down to 24 feet, but this is a shot of, uh, uh, the water being dispersed. Uh, they're pumping out about, uh, 1,600 gallons per minute, so there is a lot of groundwater coming out right now.
This doesn't solve our well problem, does it?
No.
And that was not the water that the pool was leaking.
Correct.
And so is that just going into storm sewer?
Yes. Yep. Um, so this is kind of the setup here of, uh, of the de-watering system. Back here, you see these pipes. These are what are actually in the ground. These are extras, obviously, but there's 87 points, they call them, so 87 pipes that go into the ground, come into this bigger pipe. They have a better picture here in a minute, and then this pump pumps it out to the street. So that's what we're looking at there. Here's a little bit, uh, better picture of the larger, uh, the larger pipe that it goes So that all needed to be done so that this could be placed. Um, it's a tank or a manhole, so that'll be even with the surface of the pool, and that's what will be used for all of the, uh, winterization of the pool, draining of the pool, draining, getting all the water out of it.
When you say the surface of the pool, is that going to be, you mean, the bottom of the pool, or the top of the pool, or the side of the pool?
I apologize. The top will be, uh, the deck of the pool.
The deck of the pool, okay.
Yes. Sorry about that. So this is about 24 foot tall. It's 20 some foot tall, and so that's why everyone saw the crane down there here these past few days. And here's one shot of the crane. It's already got, uh, uh, the manhole placed at this time. The contractor told me today, it's, it's the second largest crane in Iowa right now. So we had it here. That's what they needed to use to, uh, get that in, and that is the deepest part and deepest thing that we will have, uh, at the pool. They will continue to de-water for a little bit longer as, uh, they need to still put in things around this manhole. Then...
So when the pool is in place, are we still going to be having to pump out groundwater?
No.
Okay.
No. Once, once everything's in place, they'll take that system out and the groundwater will come back up to its normal level, and this stuff will be under and surrounded by water.
Okay.
Then, uh, the street was obviously closed today in front of the pool. Um, this is part of the reason why they had to end up, uh, you can see the top of the crane here, and they're, uh, sitting here in the T-intersection to start to disassemble it. Uh, they ended up having to bring about 100 foot, uh, more of the arm in to be able to reach out far enough into the pool to drop that down. So that's why the street was closed today, and, uh, they didn't know about it before because they didn't realize it until Friday, that they had to get more, uh, more parts to the crane in. So anyway, just wanted to give you guys a quick update, uh, on that and kind of what we are looking at. Uh, last picture here, looks like it's a picture of the crane. This is actually the footings, uh, of the, uh, footings and foundation of the, where the concessions stand, and the, uh, uh, guard room will be as well. So that's already been poured and is, uh, sitting waiting for the rest of it. So anyone have any questions at all about that stuff?
I bet people are asking me what the timeline is, and we're still on for May of '26.
We are still on for May of '26. Yep.
I think it could easily be June. We'll just say, I don't want to commit to May because, again, the water, that was not expected to take this long to get it out. They'll try and make up days, but I would say May-June is a better estimate, leaning heavier on the June. So I don't know that we'll be able to hit that, depending on the weather throughout the rest of the year, but we'll try. I think it's all we have tonight, sir.
Alrighty. City Council comments. Um, Councilperson Wolf.
Switching it up.
Yeah.